Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room being on this side only. Still, if there's an emergency, you'll need to run out that way or into the hallway this way, sorry. Also, just a housekeeping note, there will be no October 2nd meeting. There will be only one meeting in October, observance of a Jewish holiday. And now, please join me as we salute the American flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing. Vanderbilt Lane, Morton Lot Line Alteration and Additional Dwelling. The applicants are seeking approval for a lot line alteration, merging three lots and adding a second dwelling, as well as a pool and pool house. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Who's here to represent the applicant? There you are, sorry. Come on up. So, we were in workshop last time. This will be a chance to open it up for the public.
Good to see you all again. James Hartford from River Architects and David Schaefer, who's the owner's representative. And we're glad to be here this evening. As you're aware, we're proposing to merge several lots together and canceling the lot lines between them and then doing some construction on the single-family lot.
James, can you just put the mic a little closer for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do I need to repeat? Great. So, we're proposing to build a pool house and a swimming pool adjacent to the existing house, the 1950's house that is at nine Vanderbilt. We restored that house several years ago and the architecture, kind of feeling of the other structures that we're proposing would be in keeping of that house. It serves as sort of a buffer between the historic Vanderbilt Farm structures that are also owned by the same owner. And we see that as a good kind of transition from one to the other. They're tucked way back into the wood line and isn't as minimally visible from the street. We're also proposing a workshop building for their own personal use, it is not for commercial use, as well as a secondary guest house on the same property. One more point, we're also requesting to put a secondary driveway that would serve that workshop space and the guest house.
Anything else you want to add, Mr. Hartford?
I think that sums it up pretty quickly.
Then let me start with the consultants. Ms. Moss, any comments? Particularly, are you?
Yep. The engineering primary comments were about the driveway entrance, where we're recommending that the entrance is across from the one across the road, and then it just curves a little bit to avoid the tree lines and maintain that buffer between the neighborhood.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I believe there was a sketch that Pete designed that we had sent to the applicant's representative. It's great. Anything else on engineering that you have? Also, I believe here from the fire department about the driveways as well.
Correct.
Ms. Moss.
The one thing that I observed is that there's a wall and a pool that's very close to the 100-foot setback. And I've asked the applicants, when it comes time for construction, if they could possibly move it so that construction activity didn't go into that buffer. So, I guess we'll see at the time, but if they can't, the construction activity will require a variance from the undisturbed buffer.
So, future variance rather than now. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Can I just ask, why is it a future variance and not, wouldn't you want that as part of this process?
I don't know if, it's not shown as impacting the buffer right now.
Mm-hmm. So, do we need a construction plan now so that you can see how that works?
We could do that.
I think, you know, we have contacted our civil engineer to discuss this. One of the things that we're also hoping to do as part of that work in the area is remove a large pile of debris that was dumped there historically. It's a considerable amount of detritus. It's visible on the site plans. And it comes out to an area of about 4,070 square feet, I mean, yes, 4,070 square feet. And the intent is to restore the contours of the land there and remove whatever that is. We don't know exactly what it is, but you can see it's an unnatural disturbance to the site. And so, our intent is to, you know, that is something that we need to cross, but I think, you know, I'm hopeful that a permit to disturb the wetlands and restore that, the wetlands buffer area adjacent to that conversation. But that's, I think-
Is that part of this project?
Well, that's, it depends on how we decide to approach it. But I think it's probably better to keep it simple, and we get into the finer points of that for sure in discussion with you and the building inspector as we get closer to that, that project.
I think it's going to be most efficient for you to include it all on the plan set so you don't have to come back when you're ready to build and then you have another four-month process.
I thought it was marked on there. I thought it was marked on your plan.
The removal of that.
That land, yeah, that mass.
Yeah, I think, I'm-
I thought I saw it.
Good, yeah. I mean, it's visible on there. You know, I wasn't sure if I made it clear to you.
So then, that requires a variance from the 100-foot stream corridor, if it's within it, if he's re-rating, or is unclear? So, I think you're going to have to work with Ms. Moss to determine whether you're actually just removing debris or if you're re-rating, which would require variance.
Right. Well, it's, it's, the debris is soil that's been dumped there and-
It's fill that was brought in. He wants to restore it to what its natural state was.
Mm-hmm.
I assume that that meant that he would need a variance because they're disturbing if they're removing what's there now within the 100-foot. But that's Tad's call, zoning administrator.
Okay. So, it sounds like you probably need a variance for that, so you may want to consider whether you need a variance for the swimming pool at the same time. So, you don't have to do this twice.
Okay.
Anything else, Tad? Okay. Megan, any comments?
So, we didn't do a full review and issue a memo on this one, as we're still waiting for shipboat to issue their comments. We did have a comment concerning if the driveway could be shared up into a slip for the additional home, so that was our driveway comment.
And our position is that the current driveway is tight and a challenge to even serve the house and manage trucks and deliveries, you know, typical U K S and others. So, kind of moving some of that away for receiving packages and things like that into the other driveway and serving the second home without as much disturbance to the open field is something that we wanted to achieve by that.
Anything else, Megan?
No.
Ms. Poderow, any comments?
No.
Thank you. Let me start to my right. Mr. Gercio, any comments?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
I have nothing to add.
Ms. Dexter?
I, I'll wait for the rest of the board, but I did like the layout of the second driveway and how it was, how it missed some of the trees and, I'll see what the rest of the board says.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Yes, I read Pete's memo and Pete, I believe, went out there with the town-
Highway superintendent.
Highway superintendent and said that that was appropriate for that area to put that drive in that location, hence, I guess, the drawing then. So, you know, I felt very comfortable after Pete, hearing that from Pete.
Great.
So, that was it.
Thank you. Mr. Tuttle?
No comments.
So, we did hear from the Douglas County Water and Wastewater Authority. I assume you know this, that you're in the zone of assessment, the district, so you'll be required to hook up to the central wastewater line as it comes forth. So, you'll be applying to a permit directly for them. I don't really have a lot of other comments either. I think that we're still waiting on some more submissions. You need to do either an erosion stem control permit or a SWIP, depending. You'll be making some changes, it looks like, to the second driveway slightly. I believe that we all up here on the board pretty much agreed last time that we didn't want you to have to mimic the architecture that's there and with the existing 1950's style house, because I saw it. I think it's going to look better also and less jarring to have new modern architecture that's compatible with that rather than trying to, again, mimic things around it. But the board will also need to, in its resolution, I believe, relax the requirements for there and provide a finding of justification. So, would anyone like to speak about this application? Come on up, Ray. Or, Pat, come on up. Ms. Graff, good to see you. Someone, can you share the micro-
Long time no see.
Can you share the microphone with Ms. Graff?
I'm down here.
I think the last time we saw each other, you still had dark hair and so did I. No brain to be here.
I like this better. Good evening, everybody. Planning Board and fellow citizens. I had to write it because I wouldn't remember it. I am Patricia Graff. I'm the owner of six and eight Vanderbilt Lane on the south side of the lane. These are my comments on the proposal before the board. Three lot merger. Morton Family Farms purchased five contiguous lots from me, close to 20 acres on the north side of Vanderbilt Lane, on April 27th, 2012. This was the 25th anniversary of the Playhouse Fire in 1987. The purchase included the three lots in question. I had acquired them all bit by bit over the course of 20-plus years as I cleaned up fire damage and stabilized surviving buildings, surviving buildings, in what was the historic quadrangle of the former Vanderbilt Farm. The hay barn had held a summer theater since the 1950's. It saddened me that the Vanderbilt property, once extensive, had necessarily been broken up piecemeal over the decades. The current owner's proposal to reunite lots nine, 11, and 17 pleases me greatly. It's as though a broken teacup has been mended. ADU slash second dwelling proposal. I searched the planning board website and studied the submitted documents. There's much to admire. The proposed buildings look to reference and complement the existing mid-century modern home, which was built by Polly Jo McCulloch Masters. Polly founded the Hyde Park Playhouse in 1954. The proposed building stepped down the slope, disappearing from street view. Water features are both sparkling, the stream and still, the pool. I noted living slash hosting space, maintenance slash storage, garden slash open land. The plan appears to be attractive and carefully thought out. Reassuring to neighbors, improvements are well set back from the lane. I observe that the owners have heavily invested in bringing the original buildings of quadrangle number three dash seven back to life. How do the new buildings relate to the historic ones and to the four other Vanderbilt-era homes already on the lane? It appears that they don't. There will be references through color, texture, materials, degree of finish, and outdoor orientation, but both lots will stand stylistically at opposite ends of 125 intervening years. Maybe that is how the two building clusters will relate to each other, by contrast. As elevated examples of two eras, side by side but worlds apart, since both layouts feature a ring of related structures bending around open central space, we could think of them as two teacups. One late Victorian at the dawn of the modern age and the other of today with modern comforts and sensibilities. Observation. The historic and cultural assessment report was very interesting to read, especially about land patents, local tribes, et cetera, but statements on the land, on the site's barn foundation fragments and farm activities were speculative. More specific information is available. Caveat. Looking to the distant future, after our time, the two properties, three dash seven and nine dash 17, may eventually go to different owners. The functionality, utility, and ongoing relevance of the quadrangle property can be boosted by granting it an easement to Route nine over the land of the number nine dash seven property, parallel to the lot line of number one Vanderbilt Lane, should it be needed in the future, should it be needed in the future. Now's a good time to do so, while the deed is being amended anyway. Access via Vanderbilt Lane can be dicey. Conclusion. I am encouraged to see good progress on the north side of Vanderbilt Lane. The property deserves it. There will, however, be a personal cost to me. It would be difficult to rent slash keep a good tenant in my house at number eight Vanderbilt Lane with all the hubbub of traffic and construction. I myself might find it exciting, but no doubt others will not. Nevertheless, having studied the plans and documents and interviewed David Schaefer, I support these proposals.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. Eloquent as always.
Yes.
Now, we know, remember, I know what bless your heart means. I'm from down there. It's not, it's not a compliment.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's not really a compliment. At any rate, would anyone else like to speak about this application? Mr. Davis, please come on up.
Good evening, Ray Davis, Hyde Park Fire Department. I'm not sure if you're going to approve this tonight or not, but if you are, I'm asking for an extension or a condition that gives me time to report on this. I just received these late Monday afternoon, the plans. They went to the wrong fire department.
We know.
So, I've only had a day to review them.
Don't worry, we're not planning, we're not, this is the first time we've had this in public hearing. We still have responses due back from some agencies, including the fire department, so.
Okay.
And we've heard Ms. Graff's suggestion tonight that we'll discuss about possibly trying to locate an access easement off Route nine. I think we've looked at that before and it looked pretty tough and would have to involve DOT as well because you'd have to have in advance permission to create a driveway opening there. So, but we'll take a look at it under discussion, or they'll take a look at it under discussion later on after this. So, at any rate, you'll have plenty of opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak about this application? Ah, celebrities in the audience. Good to see you. Mr. McCormick looks the other way, right. At any rate, so, do you, there's a discussion long ago, I believe, when Ms. Graff still owned the property, I was approached by a group of individuals to want to restore or create the theater again. And the first thought we had when we looked at it was, when I talked to the highway department, was traffic has changed from the 50's and 60's to what it is now. You definitely would have to have a dedicated access lane off nine somehow and through there. It's also difficult to exit Vanderbilt Lane, so you'd have to get more traffic going through the neighborhood next door. So, there are some complications to it, but we can at least take a look.
Could I comment on your comment?
Come on up, yes. Just make sure you're speaking to the microphone, so the-
So, when I said, when I said an easement, I wasn't proposing that we all bring the bulldozers and build a driveway right now.
It's just find a location that's acceptable to DOT and everybody else.
But, but if there's two owners-
No, you'd have-
There's a lot of headache that could be avoided down the road 50 years from now when we're not here to solve it.
That's what we, that's what those of us up here sometimes remind people down there. We're not just planning for the next few years, we have to look at this for five, 10, 15, 20 years out, what the impacts are, so.
More than 20. That's more than 20. And about this driveway, the existing driveway, that's a bear. It's a bear. The delivery trucks have trouble and the trucks that do come down Vanderbilt Lane, they shake the masonry of the old buildings. Bang, bang, bang.
Wow.
But the new driveway would alleviate a lot of that, a lot of that problem and also for emergency vehicles.
Could I?
Just a plug.
I'm trying to understand, where would the new driveway go?
The new driveway?
You mean easement?
Yeah, I mean, this hypothetical access we're talking about.
So, it's a simple, have a look at it.
Okay.
Kind of on our own. But it would, it's, it would be for future, it's like when we used to do, when we'd have subdivisions, we'd take a road and do the cul-de-sac at the end of the property so that it could connect to the next property. It's just creating something so that if there is, like, as Ms. Graff said, if the two lots wind up being under different owners, it might be easier for a new access lot, a new access, a new accessway to be formed. But that would be subject to a site plan in the future, et cetera. I know, I can't find one either, that's what I was saying.
Oh, well, just because the stream corridor makes it tight.
Very. So, it may not be possible. But at least it's an interesting idea to pursue and explore.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Anything else from the consultants? So, make it a motion to adjourn this to October the 16th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You'll get a chance to respond to it. We'll wait to do anything until we hear from the fire department, okay? I think I told you that they may want, we'll pull over, something like that because of the length of the driveway, so we'll see. But Mr. Davis is pretty good about getting things back to us quickly. He'll be happy to know. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
See you later. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing for Violet Avenue Coffee Shop. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Councilman Lombardi, Deputy Supervisor Lombardi is here tonight. Just a note, again, we have not, we've been waiting on this application to hear from Department of Transportation, DOT. We finally heard from them. You've got a conceptual letter of approval. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
So, that's not a work permit. He still has to fill out the rest of it, but what it does mean in the meantime is that we can go, we can proceed and the applicant's consultant, his architect, can go ahead and now make the changes that we were talking about with lighting, crosswalk, et cetera, because we didn't want to go further with this in case they said no and you had to rethink the whole site. So, congratulations on that. Any comments from the consultants? Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Since we still need to receive one more plan, I think what we should do is hold this open, but we can consider closing it at the next meeting. So, make a motion to adjourn to October, well, I assume that Mr. Verdi, he's on vacation, I know.
Yes, he is.
He'll have time to get this, to change this into us before October 16th.
Yeah, I'm going to have to wake him up, yes.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn this to October 16th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, John, for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a workshop item. We're at a public hearing mode. This is for the Phase 2B of Bella Field. As a reminder, the applicants have made changes to the final development plan, but that's as allowed by this particular code and the way it was approved. They will be needing to go to the town board for variations rather than variances. One is for height. The other is for percentage of-
Commercial versus residential.
Right, versus residential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, thank you.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Vudra, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Tonight, I want to pick up where we left off. We, I'm going to give a brief overview of where we're at, then we have a PowerPoint presentation to go through and, of course, we'll answer any questions that you have. We presented the project earlier this, this summer, July 17th, and this is for our Phase 2B. Of course, Phase 2A, we're doing the stumping out there right now and hope to start the civil within a couple of weeks. We came back on the 22nd of August. We received comments on the 17th, we'll put those together. We've had additional comments from the planning board and we compiled a seeker compliance memo, which was requested, and we submitted nine, four, to be here tonight. In that supplemental, we included a trails plan, a detailed trails plan, an ODA map, which was requested, of course, a seeker consistency memo. We submitted the preliminary subdivision plat, updated site plans, and cross-sections, which were presented at the town board last week regarding the height. So, all that was in your package and we'll go through it tonight with this PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Larry.
This is the original concept development plan approved December of 2021. You've seen this before, prepared by Hart Howardson. This is our revised Phase 2B. We do show that in the site plan, we define the area. Of course, 2A are the 12 townhouses, and then Jared can point to the hotel, so you kind of see the context. Yep, this map shows the Phase 2, which the FDP we got approved, and this shows how that overlays over the concept development plan. And all this you've seen before, which is kind of a quick, quick review. This is our Phase 2B. How it is different than, than the two Phases 2 approved. What we've did and what we're, have presented was a building that reduces, you know, gets the apartments within two buildings with the parking garage wrapped or enclosed with two courtyards with the units surrounding them. And you've seen that tonight, I have renderings that we'll be able to present and you'll be able to see it more clearly. This is the subdivision, preliminary subdivision map that we submitted. The green shade or lights, lots that have recently been platted. The red color there, of course, is the hotel. That kind of pale yellow is Lot 4, which is the master HOA. And then, we're adding lots eight and nine. Eight is the apartment and nine is the village green. Within nine, we are condo-ing, sections of nine, the buildings will be condoed as part of that lot, which shows up on the preliminary plat. This shows, you know, at our last meeting, we received the feedback and so, we've had communication with the board in between, trying to advance this. And this is one of the drawings that we sent out showing the circulation connection, pedestrian connection, connection between, between Phase 2B, the hotel, and across the street, the city winery. We've also identified and recognized there were things we needed to do with the landscaping. And then we show here adding a playground. I know Dylan, we, you know, worked through that, but-
Before you go on, that playground is drawn out of Phase 2B's boundaries.
Oh, what's that? Yes.
Playground is out of Phase 2B's boundaries.
I moved it out.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And this is the site plan, the context of the site plan, showing how it fits adjacent with its adjacencies. And the landscape plan, we beefed up quite a bit, and so, we wanted to show this along the village green, along the buildings 100 and 200, and then along the parking lot to the north where they're left. Yeah, that guy right there. uh, and then along the parking lot to the north where the left, yeah, that guy right there. The, this is the west side elevations of Building 100 and 200. This is, is, is the most visible as you drive down Main Street. That is the, um, the visible side on Main Street. And you can see, and we discussed this early on, how we're dropping the, the north or the left side down to two stories. You can see the, the buildings on the east side, how those views will, will come out. And on the right side or the south side, we drop it down to four. This gets the total number of units to 312. Uh, the balance of the 344, which was approved in, in the Phase 2 FDP, um, are on, right, right on the Village Green. So what this does show is this is the current elevation that Mike sent me today, um, responding to, uh, some comments that, um, uh, Rob had made to us on our team's call Monday. Um, and we're addressing the, the entrance into, um, the units, um, on the south side or Building 100 side. Uh, we also show the second foyer entrance, which is to the left, yeah, which is right there. And this we just got, so we made the comments on Monday. Also in your package, um, I don't have it in the PowerPoint, but, uh, we did update the building 1300, working with Rob, putting some dormers on it. And that was sent in on September 4th. You've seen these elevations, but these are all the elevations that wrap around Buildings 100 and 200. And this shows a comparison between what was approved on the Phase 2 and what we were proposing. Again, um, this is as submitted. It doesn't reflect the current elevation we just got back from Mike. What this is here is, uh, the, the Buildings 100 and 200, as I previously said, fit within the footprint of 100, 200, and 1400. Um, mostly within that footprint. And this, um, shows that, that the, the buildings in the back would be what we're proposing. What's in front is, um, what's approved. So that red line represents the, um, the, the limits of the approved 100, 200, and 1400 to the left. And then what we're proposing is in the back. These are the elevation sections that we presented, um, last Monday, the 9th, to the town board. That's in your package. And it shows where we take these, the cut lines. We can take them any number of places, but we took them through the courtyards, um, through the wetland area on the south and the main entrance on the south, on the north through the courtyard, Village Green, Building 1300, and out to Route 9. These are the, um, rendering view angles that we have. We have a, a couple more we're still working on, um, but we'll, we want to present these. These you kind of seen a little bit. We developed them a little bit more. This is a bird's eye view, kind of, um, floating over City Winery, looking east through the Village Green into Building 200. And this is looking over Building Eclipse, the, uh, north part of the hotel. And looks, um, over, uh, Building 2600 and into 100 and 200 there with 1100 to the left. And this is, uh, down more, more at, uh, an eye level on the northwest side of Village Green, looking east. And thi, this is a bird's eye, you know, kind of over Building 1100, looking down into Building 100, but it shows the courtyard. It shows how we're wrapping the garage, hiding it. That's, um, five-story garage there. And then to the left is the, uh, northern courtyard. The thing to point out here, um, and it might have been missed, so we wanted to make sure that, um, Building 100 on that south side is, there's a pretty good landscape strip there. So it's not like it's a walking plaza that runs right up next to the building. There is a, you know, fairly wide, um, landscape strip there. Now, any, any pedestrian access into a unit or whatever, we'll have to take that walk out. Provide a walk into it. This was presented, um, and it just shows, um, the height variations. And we can, we can discuss this. Uh, the concept plan approval, Jared, can you circle that? It's 46 feet. Previously have, have approved to, to the right of that. And what we're requesting is to the right of that on that column there, the 65-4. Um, but we looked at what is the average grade along the west side, the side that is most visible. And that's 58-6. And 1100, 1200, 1300, 26 are all compliant. And then in the ratios, um, when you, when you look at just the 2B development.
Can you zoom in there, Jared?
When you look at the, um, 2B development, the ratio is 68 resi, 32 commercial. Then when you add into it, uh, Phase 1, 2A, and 2B together, then it's 59-41. So it's improved, but we still need a temporary, you know, relief on, on ratios.
Um, I had a question on this one. I believe that, although the code says that it's supposed to be kept, the percentage is supposed to be kept within those limits through every phase. We've always treated this as though the next phase is additive with the older phases. In other words, you would still be within the limit, the way I believe we counted, unless Tad's changed your mind, but that's how we've been doing this all along. In other words, I'm not sure that you need the permission to exceed that ratio temporarily just for Phase 2B, because Phase 2B isn't, it shouldn't be evaluated by itself. It always has to be evaluated with what else is there.
Well.
I think.
It says temporary imbalances may occur, but no building permit for residential development will be issued if the residential floor space would exceed 67% of the total floor space of the project for which building permits have been issued absent authorization from the board.
Right, so the potential difficulty is that the bazudo is.
Residents will go in first.
The residences are going in first. And you don't just get a building permit in a multifamily building for X number of years. You need to know you're gonna be able to finish the building.
I see what you're saying now.
So that's what it is. And, and that's why, um, are you through, where are you?
No, no, keep going.
Um, we appeared before the town board, as we told you at the last meeting. We're going to just make them familiar with the requests that we would be making. And, uh, uh, we've made it very clear that we are only requesting a temporary, um, suspension, suspension, if you will, of the ratio solely for Phase 2B and solely to the extent of allowing the residential buildings that are there to be built. The, uh, that would include 100 and 200, but also those other buildings on the side of the Village Green which have retail below and residential above. So they'll have some contribution of the balancing space. But, um, so that's the reason that we're going to need a variation.
I get it now. I was thinking, I was looking through a different lens. So thank you. And by the way, as long as, before I let you continue, Cynthia and I were a little bit confused today trying to figure out what, what step we're at in terms of making recommendations to the town board.
All right. I think that, um, what has happened to date is, again, we, um, we know that you have to refer your site plan to the county planning department. And we're very hopeful that you'll do that tonight and make your customary courtesy circulation to the other agencies, uh, that will have to make decisions, just that you, you are going ahead to review this. Um, and, um, so we appeared before the town board just to let them know where we were with this. And they would ultimately have to issue this approval, which is subject to a referral to your board, to the county planning department and requires a public hearing. But it also requires a conclusion of seeker. And you are the lead agency. So that's why for Phase 2, what this board did was, uh, at about the same moment in time we're at with Phase 2B, uh, set a public hearing to begin getting public comment, referred the application to the county planning department. And, um, as I said, not only published the notice of hearing, but also issued a courtesy notification to the other agencies that you are the lead agency. You're continuing to act in that regard and letting them know about the application. So that's what we hope happens tonight. But the town board in referring it to you did not set a deadline for your response because we're, we're all in this together trying to move forward. And so, um, we will have to appear again before the town board to actually ask the board to set their own hearing on this. And, uh, and there may actually be another variation that is required with respect to building length. We do have a break in the building, but it may be that we're just a few feet over the 300-foot length. So we will be addressing that.
I think it's like 20 feet. That's all.
16.
Yeah, 16.
I mean, it's not much.
Not, yeah.
It's, it exceeds the maximum as, as approved already listed, sorry.
So we wouldn't want to miss one, so definitely go back and, and have that done. So there will be a referral by the, the, uh, town board to the county planning department. But it makes sense that yours goes first because how could the county planning department understand the variations if it doesn't have the site plan before it?
This now makes sense, sorry.
So, I mean, I think it's premature for the planning board to even be considering the details of a height waiver and a ratio waiver until you've pinned down whether you're even okay with this change to the plan. Um, I mean, just as a reminder to the board, you approved, there was a concept plan that was approved. That was the plan by Hart Howerton. And that plan, if you go back, when it talks about the multifamily rentals, it talks about creating massing breaks, the full building height to modulate scale, create vertical proportion, provide depth, vary massing and roof forms. It talks about a series of standalone buildings. So that was your concept plan. Then they came in with a final development plan for Phase 2. And that had a whole series of, um, buildings. You guys analyzed whether that final development plan was consistent with the con, with the concept plan. You ultimately determined it was. And then the final development plan was approved with a whole series of buildings, you know, not to exceed 300 feet was one of the requirements. In the seeker review, you can't exceed 46 feet. So I think we're reopening seeker by going to this height variance. Um, and there were a whole series of, of concepts. So I think before you get to the height and ratio, you really need to step back. And what, what are we even approving? Are we approving an amendment to the concept plan? Are we amending the final development plan for Phase 2? Does this require amendment to that? Because if you overlay, you need to determine whether it's close enough or if whether it's departure from what you approved in December, what, 2023, 2022?
21.
So I think, I think as a board, you guys first need to decide, is this close enough to the final development plan and concept plan, or is this a departure? And if it's a departure, then, you know, then we're sending the concept plan back to the town board. Or, or possibly other things. So that's, that's the first set of issues that this board needs to work through.
Uh, well, we've discussed for the last two meetings that we were here, the relationship of this to the concept plan. And I think we've discussed in great detail, we've provided to the board in previous submissions, the language that makes it very clear that it's this board that has the ability to turn, uh, a water-colored concept drawing into something that works. Um, and I think that the concept plan makes it very clear that your board has the discretion to see what works and that there's not a single idea that would work here. Uh, this is, we believe, a great opportunity for the town to have something that accomplishes things that we didn't even dream were possible when the concept plan was approved. One of which is hiding parking, right? Eliminating a heck of a lot of grading. I mean, one of the seeker issues that we examined at great length was the cuts that were gonna be necessary and the blasting that was gonna be necessary and all the difficulty there was going to be. This is a great opportunity to avoid a lot of that. And we don't believe that it changes the community character at all. We're featuring now great attention to the Village Green. I think we've discussed the concept before that we create a lot more there, there at the entry when we can come in and see, uh, as you can see in that subdivision, colored subdivision plan. From 2007, one of the key points in the development of this property was that it would start at the southwest corner. That was always the plan and branch out from there. And this brings, uh, something closer perhaps to the 2007 plan in terms of, um, uh, area and, and starting off with development. I think that, um, if, if, if we constantly keep going back and, and saying you can't develop 349 acres until we have a, a concept plan that we're gonna then apply as if it was the actual plan, you're gonna lose a lot of opportunities to have something that really develops. And I think that this is consistent. We've submitted several reports as to consistency. We've informed you of what the, uh, the, the final development plan as adopted, I'm sorry, the concept development plan adopted by the town board gives this board a lot of discretion to interpret the concept plan in light of current realities, ever-inproving environmental goals.
Don't worry, I'm nodding. You already, you, you, you sold us. I know this. Because you worried it that way, I, I know. So I think what, um, Ms. Pardra was discussing with us is, so in some of your, in some of the responses, for example, um, that, sorry, that's not from you, that came to us, there are things noted that there'll be more open space, less grading. But there's, I believe at the last meeting, we kind of asked you to, in a narrative, let us understand more about what changes would be done to the rest of the site. So when you say there'll be less grading, how do we really know? Is there not going to be on those, where those buildings were before? They just stayed in natural space? Because the proposed farm loan increases by 50%, and that's not a huge increase in terms of the land area. So in other words, buying that this will be an improvement, which in many ways it is in terms of grading and protection of natural resources, all of that, that means that the rest of those natural resources would need to be preserved. And I haven't seen that in a narrative. That's just from, just me speaking. But I think that you've given us plenty of reasons, uh, plenty of reasons to consider this. So, but I'll be asking the board individually if they think that this still comports with the concept plan tonight, because that's the first step to getting us to go forward. And in terms of amending the final development plan, I guess I hadn't thought about that because these are site plans, Victoria, that's kind of supersede, or they?
It wouldn't, because they weren't at a stage where they could have a fully detailed final development plan. We approved a final development plan with the idea that they would come back with individual construction phases. So I'm, I guess this is a construction Phase 2B?
Yes.
Under that, under that framework that we set out.
Okay.
So the question, you know, what I'm asking you to do is go back and make sure it fits within the infrastructure you laid in the final development plan.
Right, and certainly we realize that, uh, if and when there comes a time that we come back to you to address any other sub-phase that's within. to address any other sub-phase that's within phase two, that we can't come in and say, as of right, we can build what, what was there before, that anything that you approve has to be approved in light of what you're approving here for phase two B. And we think that that makes a lot of sense because we're now developing from the hotel north and east and going in a more rational fashion.
Sorry. Anything else you want to add for the changes for tonight, before I call in consultants and the board?
No, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, but I.
You know me, how I go. It'll be starting there and going this way.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up. I mean, we did get engineering comments, and I went through.
Preliminary, very preliminary ones, very preliminary ones.
I was encouraged.
Me too, me too.
But yeah, we will be going, I just wanted to, sub-phases, and we'll define what those are.
Thanks, Larry.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Voss, any comments?
I haven't studied the floor plans and the foundation plans, but the articulation will be very important in that three hundred and some foot structure. I'm assuming that that'll come as we move through.
Thank you. Are you referring to, I believe, buildings one and two, the one hundred and two hundred?
Twenty-six hundred, I think.
And twenty-six hundred?
Twenty-two.
Oh. Thank you. Megan, any comments?
Not at this time. Bonnie is still reviewing the materials.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, any comments?
The, the letter was emailed by Pete. Some of the focus was just getting the fire department's comments on the roadways early on and getting a harder look at some of the stormwater and previous areas, making sure that the pond designs and swift will work with the amended plan.
Thank you, John. Ms. Plodder, any comments?
Nope. Just making sure the fine word understands where you're at in the process.
Mr. Tuttle, comments?
So to, to Victoria's point, and so there's a number of small changes to the actual site plan in this submission, but the important thing here is the seeker memo that was included with it, because that's the first determination that we have to make is whether this is compatible with the concept plan. The, the memo makes that argument based on a few things. One is the number of units staying the same. Another is the lessened environmental impact by reducing the amount of square, of square footage that's being disturbed here. And then as far as the scale of the building, it, it just notes that there's a big building in CIA, and it's not as tall as the hotel. So it's essentially, there's other big buildings, so this one can be, can be big as well. I, I did, I did not find the memo particularly compelling on this. I, I think it's important that we understand the scale of, of, of this, this residential structure, in particular, the scale of the change that we're talking about. I know it's, it's sort of technically from a construction standpoint, two buildings, but this presents as one building, building one hundred and two hundred. It is about five hundred and twenty-five feet long. It has three hundred and twelve residential units in it, in this one building. I believe the largest single residential building in this county is the Rep Van Winkle, which is a hundred and seventy-eight units in Poughkeepsie. So we're talking about a, a residential building that is of a scale that we have not seen before in this county, and I don't know of any in the, in the region that are this large. Put, put another way, a lot of folks are probably familiar with the One Duchess project, which is, you know, eight or nine larger residential apartment buildings just next to the, to the walkway. That project totals about three hundred units, I believe. So this is that project, those eight or nine buildings together in one structure. It's a, it's a big building, and it's, it's, it's not just the, the height, it's not just the height variance, it's five hundred and twenty-five feet long. That's larger than most of city blocks in our cities. And I, I really struggle to see, when I go back and I read the concept plan, and I read the seeker memos that were written, you know, last December when the phase two development plan was approved, I, I really struggle to see anything that's been included in those that anticipated or, or desired a, a building of this magnitude and a change like this. You know, the project has gone from just in this, in this green, you know, the Village Green area. In the initial concept plan, it had something like fourteen different buildings with who knows how many square footage, but if you look at the renderings and such, they're generally two or three stories, so you can get a sense of that. The plan that was approved for phase two, it went down to about nine, to nine buildings in this, in this area with something like two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of space altogether. Now we've gone from nine to five buildings in this area, and we're at about half a million square feet, it's about four hundred and eighty thousand square feet. It, it, to me, you know, you say that, quite rightly, that there is flexibility built into the concept plan for this board to, to make determinations about, you know, we, we never needed to stick to that watercolor, of course, right? But that's what happened in the last round. That was the board going through a process back and forth, making a number of, and the applicant making a number of concessions, including height, I believe, to, to come to an agreement that that was an acceptable deviation from the concept plan. It was within this board's, you know, jurisdiction to make that level of change. So now we're going this extra big step forward, and, and I really struggle to see how we haven't gone too far from the concept plan to a point where it needs to be revisited if this is the direction that you want to go. You know, I, I'll, for the sake of being thorough, I'll give a couple of other comments here, just depending, you know, maybe it'll be that the rest of the board totally disagrees with me, and we, you know, move on from there. So for that sake, I'll mention a couple of smaller things, although I will, I'll pause in case anyone wants to talk about what I just said there or react to it anyway.
We'd like to hear the rest of what you have to say.
Okay, sure. Yep. These are all much more detailed things. The, the location of the playground we had talked about, it seems very right in the middle of things. I know it's tough, given the grading here, to find a location for that amenity, but I, it's something that we're going to have to, to work on because that doesn't seem like the right spot for that. The parking lot right now, it dead ends. Is there a, is the sense that when the main street section is constructed, that it would go through and eventually not be a dead end there?
Which parking lot?
The one hundred and sixteen space surface lot.
It's on the north side, I believe.
Right.
The old garage.
Where the old garage was.
Yes, it connects, it will connect.
It will eventually, yeah, okay, obviously, right now it dead ends, but.
It'll, it'll connect to the north.
Okay. It seems like there are some things that would need to be worked out with that. Right now, the, it looks like the sidewalk's just kind of dead end at the end of it, or at the, at the sort of the beginning of it there.
Okay.
I was hoping for a little bit more on the landscaping. I haven't, I'm not sure the staff will make the determination of whether it meets the, the requirements for, for landscaping, but whether the sidewalk gets continued through the middle of it or something. There's a little bit of space to work with there, and it'd be nice to see if we can do a little more with that to break it up or to, and to increase its accessibility and such there. The, I, I noticed in your submission, and this goes to sort of the next phase of the project, but considering that these relate to each other, we need to think about that as well. The plan sheet says that buildings seven hundred and six hundred, which are the ones on the east side of Main Street, are one-story commercial. That's not what's shown in the renderings that you just submitted. Is the plan for those to be one-story commercial, or would they still have upper residential units?
The, the lofts that were on top of there are moved into Village Green.
Yeah.
So right now, it's not changing anything. They're, they're one-story.
All right.
In the phase two approval.
Yeah. I mean, in, in a sense.
Now that one story is eighteen feet.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
But we're still, we're going from fifty whatever, five, or more than that, sixty whatever, the, the five stories is dropping directly down to one story. And one-story commercial along a main street, it feels almost as incongruous to the concept plan as, as the, as it does to me. I really struggle with that. And it gets at, at something I'm struggling with, with the, with the plan as a whole right now, which is this sort of, it's, it's still a mixed-use plan in the sense that there are, is a mix of uses on this property, but instead of this full integration of residential and commercial, we're having this sort of division where the residential is, is in this building over here and the commercial is over here. All right? It's something that, you know, you see sometimes, like with Hudson Heritage, for example, has done this, where you have the single-story commercial in one area, and then the residential will be in a different part of the site. And I want to be, that, want to be careful that we don't lose that, that sort of full integration of, of a mixed use, where you have the upper-story residential and such. I think that's really important. I think it's also going to be pretty, it's, it's going to be, from a design perspective, pretty funny to, to go from that, that five stories directly down to a one-story. Particularly, I assume you're still going to want to do the sort of boulevard with the angled parking and such, and with the one story, you really sort of lose the framing of that, of that space. It's going to feel like an open and wide space rather than having that sort of sense of enclosure that you like to get from a downtown, from a main street in the village and such. You know, I, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Dylan. Mr. Waters?
No. You know, a lot, a lot of what was said is, is, I agree with, you know, a lot of ways, but we're also trying to get a conceptual of what this, I'm still working on concept of what this is. I know that the scale of it is very big since it went to the five stories. I understand why it was proposed to us that way because of the parking areas. But, you know, so, so that, that I'm okay with. It's the length of the buildings and the articulation which keeps coming up and stuff. I think, I think the base is here. I think it just needs to be a little bit maybe expanded on, maybe things that could be changed to give a little bit of height variation in certain areas. I, I know that's something that the developer, I know they have a certain plan too. So, you know, we have to be, not that we have to be conscious of it, but it is something to develop this and to actually come to fruition with it. It needs to be something that, you know, works for all parties, including, you know, what we see versus what can actually be built. So, and right now I haven't had a chance to look at the changes, but, you know, I'll definitely go through them. I'll make suggestions like I always do on articulation, the foundation. That, that's a good point. I think a lot of this could be done with that. It's just, you know, where do you, you know, when you take away something, where do you put it back? You know, so, so that the numbers work, so that all that works. I, I do agree with the, the one-story going, you know, it's, it's, even though it's eighteen feet, it's actually like almost the height of a two-story, and I assume that doesn't include or does include the roof, or we don't have a height on that, so we don't know. But maybe that could be utilized, that, some of that space, and could open up the bigger to, to get the numbers to work. But it, it's going to take a little bit of thought and engineering and architectural wisdom to figure this out, manipulate it so that it works. But, but I, you know, I'm okay with things, the scale going from the five-story to the one-story. It's, you know, it, like, that, that's, that's a very, you know, six, what is it, sixty-eight feet, I think, or what was it?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's.
Average grade.
Yeah, yeah. So, but like I said, there's things that could possibly be done. So I, I mean, I don't think we're to that point yet because we're not getting something that's a finalized, this is what we're going to do. It's still conceptual to me. It's, you know, so it's not, nothing is finalized. So we're still interpreting what everybody is thinking and trying to put it into a drawing. So, so that's where I'm at. So, but I, I do thank you for, you know, make, working on those entries and, you know, the effort that went into that on such, such short notice. So I, and, and that you're willing to listen to when, you know, when I, I know I, I make suggestions or I do a little drawing or something and I hand it off and you try to work with it, you know, or, or say, Rob, you're crazy, you know, that's okay too. That's okay. You know, that's okay. You know, it's not, but I, I think, I think the length of some of the buildings can be adjusted just through manipulation, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, and that's where I'm at with it. As, as for the playground, I wanted to ask you about that. You bring up a good point where it's located, but did, the playground, you know, is that an open playground? Is it?
Yes.
So, so what happens in the winter? Like, what, what do we do in the wintertime?
On the, on the phase two FCB approval, there's a playground north of this location, and that's where we want it to be.
Okay.
So, but until we get there, we got to have one.
This is, okay. Okay, so this meet, is, this is meeting a requirement then basically, and it'll stay there probably or whatever, wherever it is located, but it's temporary.
And, I mean, projects big enough, we can move it, you know, in the future.
Yep. Yep. And I think that was it.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dexter?
Yes, it's a lot. It's a lot to absorb. I do understand my colleague Dylan's comments about the concept. It's like anything, though, if three people read something that's quite extensive, we're going to come away with different feelings. I think I've said this before, is that from when this first came through, almost twenty years, over twenty years ago, where the entire site was pretty much flattened and developed, in order to get, in order to not have that happen, you do need to start from, and be very dense in one section and then maybe go out. And I find myself, I've read that, the concept overview, I, I personally feel that this is striving to try to live within the concept guidelines that we set. We, again, if you ask me what that envisioned to me, it's going to be very different, probably what, what my colleagues have thought. So you keep bringing us your thoughts, right? We looked at the last one, that seemed to fall in, that took a lot of work to get it to fit the concept plan. Now there's this different approach. What I like about this approach is the less grading, just knowing that, that whole back section that you were going to have to literally claw out that hill. I like that. I grew up in that neighborhood. I'm, I'm happy to see that become just part of the landscape. And I think, I think, Michael, you said this, what is missing is even, again, we've seen these, we've seen the vision change, but if I could just visualize a concept of how this, if this is the, the key stone, how does the rest of it go? Because when I was looking at that playground, the first thing I thought is, oh, look at that, it's at the edge and there's, there's parking lots near it. And then I said, but what if beyond that, it was feeding into something that made sense? Where we're going to walk down to the playground and, oh, by the way, just beyond that is another segment that fits with why I might want to walk down that way. So I'd love to see more narrative on, on, if I'm living in those very dense, it's, they're like neighborhoods, they're like stacked neighborhoods, the way you have them. I just want to know how that interacts with the rest of the site, because in my brain, I know how the original plans interacted with the site, and it was just, we would go from one neighborhood into the next in different styles and roads, and this is always, I've always liked this approach, where we talk, we're talking about farming, we're talking about integrating the land, we're talking about literally giving people a place where they can live. So if, if you could talk more about how the, how this cornerstone of this project fits in with the rest, just, I'm, I'm sure it would change, but just to understand, here's an option, here's an option for how this all fits together. an option, here's an option for how this all fits together. That would help. But, you know, I, I'm okay with the concept. I think, I think the concept was written broad enough that we sit here and we try through architecture and other ways to, to get it to fit. And I think the only, the only building that I'm, I'm kind of having a problem with is that 2600 building, just because it's kind of, but I, again, we're, we're trying to come up with something that works. And I love the up and down of the other 100s and the 200s. I don't know if there's enough commercial there, because again, I can't see how it fits in with the whole rest of the site. It could be that that's the perfect amount of little shops that the people who live right up above need, and then you have something else. I don't know. So, if you could just maybe think more about how those big jigsaw puzzle pieces fit, that would be good. And I so appreciate Victoria over there and, and you, Jennifer, for basically kind of trying to tell us where we're at in this, in these plans, because it's, for me, it's been 20 years of, well, now, now we're in this section, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Oliver?
So, I would agree with Ann. I, I do feel that what you're bringing to us does fit within the, the approved concept. And I just have a few questions just to kind of help clarify where I'm at. On this slide here with the yellow in the background?
Yes.
Now, what, that yellow represents the previously approved height with the change of the grading, right? Because the buildings would be set back farther up in the grain, grade change, or no?
Or is it just the background?
The green line, the dash green line represents what we're proposing.
Yeah, what, what's the yellow?
The yellow's just the sky.
Just the sky? Okay.
Beautiful sunset.
All right.
Nuclear.
All right, no problem. That was, that was the one question. But I do like how you proposed it with how it's going to change the amount of grading and how it's kind of closer to Route 9. So, you're not going up that hill, which will help with the sightlines. And the only other, like, the only issue I really see with it is building 1100 and 1200. If we can somehow, and I think I said this a couple of meetings ago, maybe make them like an L to not, not fully close in the Village Green, but just to kind of create more of that downtown street feel, so you're not looking at a building end. You can just make that, you know what I mean? You know, not, not close in the Village Green, but just maybe make the opening to Village Green a little bit smaller. And then, because I, what I think I envision here, and like Ann was saying, seeing how it relates to the rest of the site, without those buildings along, was it 2C and 2D, the ones in the back, the residential buildings to the, to the east? I'm not sure that the elevation is a big issue because you're not going to have those towering residential buildings as you look down the Main Street corridor. It's going to be more of a smaller-scale commercial district because that residential is now pulled out. And I think as you look at it in a broad scale, like Ann was mentioning, that will really help us envision, okay, you have the residential here, but as you look down the street, and, and that's why I was saying for building 11 and 1200, if you can kind of put a, a bookend on it so that it starts your eye to go down that Main Street feel rather than a, an end of a building, I think that might kind of bring it all together.
Up here, this, on this end?
Correct. Those, those two, so that side right there, if you turn it to the south a little bit, you know, extend that building right there and you can fit another commercial space in that corner. And then the same thing to the north, and then between the two buildings, you have the entrance to the Village Green.
Yeah, they're not closed, they're not closed to all that's in.
Correct. You would narrow the entrance, the with-
Narrow, yeah, you would kind of choke down the entrance, but that would also give the, the eye and the pedestrians the idea that, okay, here, here starts the, you know, the downtown commercial district. That, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Garcia?
I agree with Ann and the only thing, my, I'm looking at it as a broader picture. When you get bigger buildings, no matter what you do, they tend to just look like bigger buildings, not attractive. You lose sight of everything when you're looking at them. And that's my concern, like, when I look at rendering up, was it 2700?
Yeah.
That's a massive building. And then I start thinking like, you could get lost in there. What about fire?
You mean 2600?
Yeah, 2600, yeah.
Except on, it says 2700 on that.
Yeah, 2600. It kind of, and it looks like, like a large building. Like, when I'm, I don't know if people are familiar, across the line, going out to Connecticut on 84 and just past Danbury, there's a huge development that Toll Brothers built up there.
Oh, yeah.
And I've walked that all the time. And there's apartments up there with these big apartment buildings in there. They're just darn ugly, you know, they're just so big and massive. I don't want to see this project lose the Main Street feel. I think commercial has to be integrated. I think it's got to feel like a Main Street. And that's my concern. And you, you could do things to these buildings to make it feel, but if you get too big, I don't think, I think you're going to lose a lot of the feel. But it's hard to tell. I mean, I'm trying to get a grip on this because it's so big to me. But that's my, my thoughts. I, I think you're within the concept, I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't even know if I have a problem with the height. I'm more concerned about a broader perspective of losing the feel of a Main Street than what Chris is suggesting. And the, the playground, to me, just looks like it was stuck there. But, you know.
Temporary.
Temporary, but, you know, it's a big project. Like you said, you can move it. There's going to be changes, there's got to be flexibility. But that's, again, I don't have an issue with the concept. I don't even know if I have an issue with the height. I like the project. I think it's, when it's done, it's going to look fantastic once we get through some minor things.
And 2600, when you look at that, you, you, you can see that we're hiding the parking.
Yeah, oh, no, I get it.
You know, that takes, you know, that's a-
Takes a lot of-
That's a, that's a three-deck, 200-plus space.
Yeah.
You know, that we're, that we're hiding.
That's not developed yet, though. That's just conceptual. Again, it's just, it's just a placement holder. You haven't even drawn it.
It's 20,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So, that is 40,000 per floor and the parking.
But it's how it's designed that'll make it, whether it looks like it's a giant building or not.
Understood, but from a massing standpoint, that's-
Yeah, you need it to cover a parking garage. So, it's like, it's a trade-off.
Yeah, yeah, and then the same thing with building 100 and 200, as you see, where that's a five-deck parking garage, you don't see.
And also, the, the bird's eye view isn't the most flattering for building 2600 because you're see, you're seeing a view that no one would ever see on the ground or in a vehicle.
This building is, what, three stories?
Yes, 2600 is three stories.
It's just long.
And what's going in there?
Institutional, you know.
Educational use.
Oh, they're not apartments.
They're not apartments, no.
They're not apartments.
So, let me just clarify, because I just did this with, with Ann. This building is not, it's being proposed as part of this, but it's not a final design as far as I can tell, as far as I remember, because you're not, you're unsure of the tenancies, et cetera, and through there. So, they're giving us, again, this would be more conceptual than what it is realistic.
Is this just for the ratios at this point?
Yes.
Well, it's also, I think, to show that the overall plan here is, the overall plan is to try to hide parking whenever possible, right? And again, to have at the southwest corner of the site, the more buildings with higher mass to reflect what's across the street and have them be there and growing clue, up into the farm areas, et cetera, as you go further north on the site.
To say, it's hard to evaluate if there's any secret change or anything from this much larger use, if you don't really know, you know, what it's going to be and any details. So, keep that in mind.
Well.
From, I, I think from seeker, we can, you know, analyze it as approved, you know, institutional, educational.
Yeah, I mean, we, we didn't have tenants when we evaluated the concept plan or the-
Oh, but it was just a much smaller educational, institutional use. And I know that you guys have been advertising it's tax-free lawn and all this other stuff. So, I think just trying to understand what the ultimate use of this will be in.
The goal, the ultimate use is really for the CIA and all, maybe potential, the new ends. That's the idea. Because that was initially the plan way back was with CIA.
It's like an educational space, right?
Yes.
Extension.
It was to be used for conferences and demonstrations. The CIA currently uses its California campus to gather food representatives of, say, airplanes, airplanes, airline carriers, sorry. And will do, they'll cook up meals, they talk about things, and then kind of deploy that out to their other, there's a lot that they could be doing there, if that way.
Continue education for them as well.
This is, I should go back to my original question. Are we amending the final development plan for this? Because we're not going to have construction-level detail for this building, it's very conceptual still, right? So, is this really a final development plan amendment? I think we should think through that.
I think you and Ms. Todd should get together and discuss this, yes. I think you and Ms. Todd, it's going to be better, more clear for the planning board if you guys can agree on what the next, on the terminology and next steps forward, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, I just, because if you don't intend to build it as part of this phase and, because we're going to ask for those kinds of details, and if you're not ready to give them, it seems like a waste of everyone's time, you know, your money to plan something that's not.
Just to get a variation.
Right. So, let's, I think we should talk about that.
There's always some ways you can lay that out on that spot. And we think this is going to be something that would be acceptable to those institutions.
Okay, I mean, if you want to go forward with it, that's fine, I just-
So, are, are you suggesting it may be easier just to work through the imbalance of ratios rather than include a building that we aren't going to get plans for?
That's perhaps my suggestion, yes.
Okay. Maybe easier path, path for them?
Well, I mean, if they want to go ahead and, and plan it, and we can comment on it, but if it's really not ready for that discussion, it just, I'm not sure it's a good use of everyone's time and energy.
It helps us market it as well, building spaces, so that's, that's-
Okay, I mean, it's your, but then, right, then we're going to have to do a detailed site plan for it.
Okay, a couple of things. I believe you heard all my colleagues to the right agreeing that this stays in the concept plan. Robert thinks that you're basically within it. Dylan thinks that you're varying out. So, and Stephanie is not here tonight, and of course, I won't be reviewing this project after tonight. So, I'm not really sure what difference it makes, what I think, but I can say this, the concept, as I looked at it, was more of a downtown village feel. That's how we referred to it 20 years ago, when we were first, 19 years ago, when we were first reviewing it, was that it was supposed to be kind of like a village. That's the reason why the buildings were smaller in scale and had all the architectural variations to them, so that it was meant to look somehow magically as though, like Rhinebeck, you had a building up here, then up here, later on here, so you had different styles, all that. I don't think that that's what's now being proposed conceptually. At the same time, that's sort of the physical look of it and the feel of what was proposed, I think, first and the terms that were used. But there are also other terms in here that, and there's also criteria for this, this district, this PUD, that really does discuss increasing tourism, et cetera, and increasing visitors. And while this increases residential substantially, it's unusual enough that I think it might attract the way it's laid out, et cetera. I think it will attract visitors, not beyond just the hotel guests. In other words, once you get your commercial activated. But I do think more than anything else, again, in reading the narrative, I agree that, like, the height was, references were made many times to the fact that there's the 150-foot buffer along Route 9. But that's not going to stay like that. Trees are going to be removed. That's already been approved, the, there'll be, there's, sorry. That's, there's going to be a lot of trees removed and through there that are considered less than healthy. I don't know what the, what the actual equipment is planned for the playground as proposed, but it's asserted in through the narrative that there will be no extra demand on community services. But it's a lot of residential there, so it's, and it doesn't look that big a playground to me. So, I'm just wondering if, again, a little bit more narrative would help me too, because as Ann said, I need to figure out with moving parts like this, if you're saying there's going to be less grading, then are those areas going to be permanently open? Are you going to move, haul some of the other development back over and make this more and more dense consistently and higher? Because that's what we're not seeing. The rest of the site under the approved concept plan still looks like it did, but as we've learned, based on economics, market trends, and finances, it may need to all be compiled more. For example, I also, I really do think that you should have two-story buildings on Main Street. That's kind of the concept that was there too. But I realized, because you wanted to keep the same number of overall residential units, they kind of got whisked from there and put over, like with the other buildings as well, into the big, big buildings. I have to say that the image you had beforehand, when I saw it, scared me, like scared me. These look huge, and this is coming from the hotel. So, you see huge and huge again in the back. But as Jennifer pointed out, unless you are flying like the bird or you're staying in the adjacent hotel, you're not going to observe this the same way. This isn't going to be visible from us to see the, looking down, that these are now massive-looking structures. In a way, it's almost like we saw the little tiny houses in Monopoly, now we see the big hotels in comparison to here. The other overall point I want to make is that it seems to me as though many of the, I'll call them architectural embellishments, that were kind of labored over initially have gone, whether that's awnings, Ls, different turnbacks. When I saw the previously approved west elevation slide, which you could call up, and the proposed west elevation slide, they look pretty different to me. There's more pizzazz, I guess is how I'd put it, in the architectural elements. And it's the same architect who did it, Mr. McCormick. So, I know, I know it can be done again. It's just, and, and again, this is maybe a complaint, not a complaint, this is a point about the builder, the developer, or the actual builder. They have more of a, I don't want to use the term cookie cutter, but they have styles that they like, that they're familiar with, and I think they're probably helping to drive this. And the one thing I want to point out, that's the very cover paragraph of the design guidelines, is this is supposed to be celebrating Hudson Valley, architecture that's unique to the Hudson Valley. This looks like I could see the, I could see this on Long Island or Texas or any other place. So, for me, where I continue on this application, I'd still be looking at architecture very, very seriously in order to see how this fits within the concept plan itself, because right now it looks a little dull to me still. Not terrible, I don't want to say that, but again, if you compare the two, you see a sort of Greek tower look here. You see elements on top of, on top of the roof line that, again, go to break up things if you're looking at it or if you're looking from afar from Route 9. And with, again, when there are buildings removed, I think you're going to see more of this, at least the top of it, than what some people are expecting that we will. That noted, I do know that there's intervening structures, et cetera. And I also think, by the way, that the two buildings that are on the other side of the Village Green, those architectural styles, to look at the old kind of style we had, is these two big buildings that have kind of lost that feel. And because they're so big and so wide, it's like that's where we need to have the emphasis put back in, to have, again, awnings, some, anything. But I compare the two, and I just feel that they're, that it's very different inside that. Now, again, you haven't heard all of us come to agreement yet. We were all kind of all over the map. But I do think that there are, the, the concerns that were raised were, and John, I'm going to quote you because you put it very simply, "Big buildings can sometimes look like big buildings." And it would, it's the articulation and it's the architectural details that can minimize that effect. Because 2600, the hotel, and these two others are going to all be pretty massive. And like Dylan, I think that going to suddenly a one-story, it's going to feel strange when you've been walking through, if you're walking way up the road where you're not going to feel the earth and the sky the same way, and then you suddenly get down to where it's all there, it seems kind of more jarring to me, the experience, and a less integrated. I also do believe that you should consider trying to keep the residential above Main Street because it's been, you've all told us before that one of the reasons that we can't have the commercial yet is because we need to have more residential in close proximity. There's no more close proximity than walking downstairs and being able to get your coffee or bagel or whatever in the morning. I can assure you, because I lived in the city, city is way too much of my life. At any rate, I, I think that, that you heard good things from the board. We still have some discussion to go. We still have some discussion to go. I won't be here anymore, so can't do those offline meetings, but I do believe that there'll be smaller groups that can still do that for you, with you. Ann and Chris are planning on, in case everyone here hasn't heard, my, this is my last planning board meeting tonight, after 19 years. Been a pleasure. But Ann and Chris are going to be kind of trying to tag-team each, each other to help do the things that I was able to do during the day, because they, unlike me, they both work for an income. I just toil here for nothing. But at any rate, so what, what are the next steps? Do we, first, we need to, yeah.
Can I just bounce off something that you said about, about the architecture? That, so I, I looked at all of the Bezuto projects that were included in the town board presentation that you made, and did the street, street view, and went around them, all that kind of thing. A lot of them, very, very similar. Like Michael was saying, seemed like it could be on the edge, the urban edge of a lot of cities. One exception to that was the Chevy Chase project, where the architecture is, is notably different from what's happening with their other projects. And it's also notably more open. That's in, that project is in a U shape, there's more integration of the commercial and the residential. It feels far more open and more connected to what's going on around it than a lot of their other projects. So there are, feels like if we were, I hear my colleagues, if we're going to stick with this, and there's a sense that it's part of the concept plan, or that it fits with the concept plan, then it feels like there are, there is room within Bezuto to make some changes to the architecture that can make it more representative of this area, and also make it integrate a little more into the remainder of the project.
Better said than the way I was saying it. Credit to Mr. Tuttle. But yes, I think that there are ways, that there are ways to improve this still, and I had the pleasure, distinct pleasure, of addressing a law school class of eight individuals Monday morning at Pace. And one of the things that I told them was, A, that I was thrilled they were going into this business, because maybe you could find some people to work now, Jennifer and Victoria. But more importantly, as I said to them, it's important that we have everyone interested in the land use and sort of planning process, because the built environment lasts longer than we do. When you go into Europe and you see buildings that are 2,000 years old, we want to make sure that these structures are here to make everybody proud currently in Hyde Park, proud to live there, proud to live here, to see these every day, and proud that they'll be up for maybe another 200, 300, 400 years. So that's why I've said all along to every applicant, architecture is the most important part of our discussion up here, because we didn't have good architecture. No offense, for many years in the town, and I believe that, thanks to my colleagues, that has changed, tried to change. And this is a great example of taking down where land was nothing and showing what the best can be that's there. And I, I understand that when it's the best, we have to be looking at finances as well. Believe me, I do know, because you don't, nobody has that much money to throw into creating the Taj Mahal, as someone said to me the other day. But I, I think that, I hope it gives you enough to go forward with. Yes?
I think that these comments have really been very direct and quite specific, so I think it gives us a place to go, and I think we would definitely be looking for some meetings in between official meetings to work some of these ideas.
As I nod, I won't be here.
Well, when we speak in design terms, we're visualizing something in our mind, but sometimes it's a little hard to, to convey it. But I think you've all done a great job of conveying where the issues are.
Bonnie couldn't be here tonight, but Bonnie and Megan and the app, the consultants, they're certainly available for an offline meeting. And if we can have just one, one, one planning board member there, that helps. I find. Maybe two.
And, and I'm going to rely on Cynthia to help find these dates and, and-
Will you reach out to Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That we will figure out.
And we'll figure it out. Yep.
Thank you.
So there's only one meeting in October, is that true?
The October the 2nd is, well, you can have offline meetings before that.
I was going to say, yeah.
There's plenty of time to have those offline meetings to be more productive. But it's the beginning of a Jewish holiday, that October 2nd.
Right.
So, out of respect and observance?
Yes.
We're not doing it. That's affected, the, the, dates of many holidays affect sometimes our schedule. We, we had a long spell where we didn't have to worry about it, but for some reason this year, we had things lent on different dates, so whatever. Anyway, and I don't, we had the next item on the agenda as being a discussion of the subdivision, but is there really much to discuss?
I mean, I think the subdivision lines really follow the site plan.
I think so, too.
Yeah, we, we agree on that. There, I don't see them changing much.
Neither do I.
Lot 8 is going to be lot 8, lot 9 is going to be lot 9.
I mean, you could go ahead and put on for the next, the next meeting also a resolution to accept for sketch.
I mean, we could, but I think-
Do you want to resolve other things first?
I think we should get the concept down, because then we don't have to go back and amend the subdivision plot.
And I want you two to discuss what your amendments-
For instance, is the playground in the Phase 2 area now?
Yes.
We'd have to check.
Larry said, Larry said he withdrew the line.
Yeah, so what I think we, we need to do is, is have the offline meeting, and in preparation for the next meeting, we'll write the narrative, so you understand how that future build-out will happen.
Bingo.
So I can, I understand that that was missing, so we'll, we'll address that. And then the comments we've got here tonight, we'll, we'll address. We do want to be very productive at these meetings, and so the offline meeting would help us to formulate our response to, to be back here. And the next meeting is the 16th.
16th.
Okay.
And just so you know, I went through, I've spent three days going through all my files, and they're organized and up to date, so whoever I appoint to my place, I'll be happy to meet hand with and pass them off. And believe me, there's a lot. Well, these are just, I, I organized the active files, things are still ahead of us. But I have like quarter, quarter plan, there's a lot of stuff I have, natural resource inventories that I need to pass along to some-.
Some of us went digital.
Right.
As a sign-off from us, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Been a pleasure right back here, too.
Thank you.
I promise you.
All the best.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, wait, let's see, where's my?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your candor and your interest.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Divine Ground-Mounted Solar. Excuse me? Is Divine Ground-Mounted Solar, this is the first time the board has seen this application? Do you want to come and do a quick presentation for us?
I just want to say something. As a former chair of the Town Planning Board-
Can you please speak into the microphone? This is important.
So, I just want to say something, because I didn't say anything all night, so I have to say something. So I just want to say, as a former chair of the Town Planning Board for a number of years, I want to just say thank you for all your service in terms of the Town of Hyde Park and being a neighboring town. You know, I know what you go through, and sometimes it's not easy, as we know. You have to make decisions, plus and minus, and make the way, but you do, you did a very great job for the Town of Hyde Park.
No, thank you very much.
So I've got to say, well done, my, my friend.
Thank you, my friend, as well. Very much. And I'll, I'll be seeing you around, as you know.
Oh, I know.
Many places, that's right.
Thank you, Mike, that was great.
Take care, Michael.
Wow.
Divine Ground-Mounted Solar?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Shannon Murphy, and I'm here representing Empire Solar Solutions. So I'm here to propose a residential solar ground mount for the, the address 172 South Cross Road in Satsburg, New York, 12580. The total system size is 32.80 kilowatts, consisting of 80 410-watt rec solar panels with three solar edge inverters. The panels cover 1,603 square feet, which will not be visible from any locations of the neighbors. The panels do include anti, anti-glare coating with black framing. They're also lead-free. And the panels are proposed to be installed in systematic and uniform arrays. And I have the engineering attached. I don't know if you need that or not, or if you have it.
We've all had a chance to review it. Don't worry. It's just that the first time, I always like to let people take the mic over instead of me blabbing so much. At any rate, this seems like a fairly simple application. Let me start with the consultants, Ms. Moss.
Yeah, Pete just asked that some contours are shown on the plan, so we can see how any runoff might be affected. It can be GIS contours from LiDAR. And then with the contours, we'd ask to see silk fence erosion controls for any disturbed areas, just to protect the area.
Okay, I'm so sorry. So say that one more time, the contours?
We'd like to see contours in the map, and then also with the contours, see silk fencing to protect from any disturbed areas.
Okay, and disturbed areas like?
Trenching or post holes for putting panels in, or however they're being attached to the ground.
Okay.
Anything else? Megan? Ms. Palladaro?
No comment.
Let me start to my right again, Mr. Gercio, comments?
Uh, no, no comments.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
So I live on South Cross Road, and I, I've seen that where it's been cleared to put in the solar panels, which I don't have a problem with, but I believe it's within the 100-year floodplain, which unfortunately is becoming more like a-
It didn't show up that way on GIS?
Well, having lived on that road, and when we get two consecutive, consecutive tropical depressions, that, that creek overflows, and so I just, I'm like, ooh, those, it's going to be underwater. But do you design for that?
Yeah, so the engineer does take things like that into consideration, and I do know that, I think it's on page 3, it is 121 feet off from the, that location, which I do believe the guideline says that it should be 50 from the front, so it does surpass like the minimum requirement.
Okay. That was my only comment.
Thank you, Ann, that's a good comment, and it helps much that you live there, experience it all the time. Mr. Waters, any comments?
No.
No.
Mr. Tuttle?
No comment.
I don't have any either. And we have a resolution prepared to classify the action and refer this over to, they're just kind of planning because they're required to. And this is, oh, Mr. Waters, this is your resolution.
Yes. Yep. Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Divine Solar, Resolution 2024-23. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as Type 2 action under SECRE, directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any names or extensions? The motion carries. I just spoke to the incoming chair, because she happens to be to my right, and she'd like to have this set, public hearing set for October 16th, so making a motion to establish it for the 16th of October.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Okay, I won't see you, but the rest of the board up here will be seeing you back in a little bit.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, by the way.
Thank you! Next item on the agenda. The CIA Hotel and Villas, probably better known as NRI Hotel and Villas. As a bit of background, the applicant request for the town board to amend the, do the zoning text amendment was granted, everything was granted that they needed. So they're now back here for us to kind of do a little bit of cleanup, I'll call it, to amend the conditions of the, of the original resolution, and also acknowledge a few other things. Mr. Zarin, should I turn this over to you now, so you can do it more quickly than me?
Well, I feel a little strange that this will be the last matter that you oversee, and I just wish you the very best of luck. You've, you've, I've worked with you personally now for about four or five years, and I know you've left your legacy. And you've created a culture on the board, and have created, and I've said this before, I'm in front of dozens and dozens of boards, a board that's been an absolute pleasure, the professionalism, the competency, the integrity, everything about it. So I congratulate you, wish you the very, very best of luck. You've, you've definitely served your time.
Thank you, I want to point out that, wait, I want to point out that Ms. Dexter and I were appointed the same day, and she's staying on, so I'm the piker here.
And I also want to, and I guess in a way, congratulate, and-
I'm not sure of those words.
Big shoes to fill, but, but you've been prepared to fill them, and you're-
Michael is a model, and he's, he's, he's trained us all very well.
My goodness, my halo must be shining tonight now. Mercy.
Turn it down.
So, thank you for your support in this text amendment. I know, you know, it created some difficulties for all of us, and-
Initial consternation, but resolved through working together.
Resolved with, with, with your assistance and recommendation. Town board, as, as Michael said, passed it unanimously last night. And the cleanup is, you know, part and parcel of us working diligently, and I mean diligently as, as-
I'll say.
Those were the tasks to get those conditions, 47 conditions, satisfied. And been working very closely with staff and, and, you know, Victoria and, and Tad and others.
And, and Calburn, at the town attorney?
And town attorney, yes, to, to get that done. So this will advance that process tonight, this, as Michael said, the cleanup, and just want to thank you.
Of course. Anybody have any questions about the resolution? I think so. It's, Victoria, you prepared, you and Cassandra prepared it pretty clearly by the way, the narrative, the way you laid it out, so I didn't have any problems with it either. And this is Mr. Oliver's resolution to introduce tonight?
Resolution to amend the resolution granting final approval to delete Condition 5 and to amend Schedule A, CIA Hotel and Villas, Resolution Number 2019-39I, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby amends the resolution to amend Condition 5 to read as follows, 5 deleted. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby amend Schedule A to the resolution to include Sheets G001 and G002 as last revised September 10th, 2024, to acknowledge that the project constitutes a lodging facility and lodging facility villa use as set forth in the attached amended Schedule A. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby amends the resolution to amend Condition 11 to read as follows. 11, establishment of an escrow in the amount of $15,000 to be replenished when it is drawn down to $3,000 to reimburse the town planning board for fees for environmental monitor to, for an environmental monitor to monitor invasive species during construction for five years, and for five years post-construction, and establishment of a separate escrow account in the amount of $15,000 to be replenished when it is drawn down to $3,000 for an environmental monitor for other than invasive species during all phases of its construction. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the invasive species monitoring plan in satisfaction of Condition 12 of the resolution.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Motion is unanimous with the exception of our one absent member. Congratulations. I wanted to tell you, you didn't have to come all the way up here just to support this.
We came out of here to say goodbye.
Thank you. I assume, Lou, I assume I'll be seeing you starting around here, working around here shortly, right?
I'm here actually pretty often now.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. I was here last week, all week, and been here, got here yesterday, I'll be here working away.
Now you can get busy, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Exactly.
What you wanted.
Once I get those plans signed.
Just so you're aware, Ms. Dexter has signed plenty of signs over the years when I wasn't here, so she's familiar with knowing how to do it exactly as well.
I know how to operate that pen. I know how to operate that pen. It's a special pen.
It's a special pen, that's the truth.
I have to learn how to write with it.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver. This is for approval of a site plan waiver request. This is for placement windows and siding at home located at Core Rogers Place. Ms. Moss has recommended the waiver approval. This is for windows and new vinyl siding. This is in the scenic area statewide significance, but it's not directly viewable from either one of the two historic sites, i.e. FDR Home and Presidential Library, or the venerable estate, nor is it visible from the river. Anybody have any other questions?
No, I'm just so happy someone bought and is rehabbing that. It's gonna be beautiful. This is yours.
This one's me, right? Site plan waiver for windows and siding, Resolution 2024-41. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved the town of Hyde Park planning board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department, August 23, 2024, and per the waiver request to the planning board dated September 16, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extension? Motion carries unanimously. The, well, it looks like it's the second to last item on the agenda now. Olivia Amabirdorf, seeking approval, another site plan waiver approved for home renovations and HVAC system.
That's what I thought we were...
This is the, this is the one that's being renovated, yes, at 4407 Albany Post Road. We had the recommendation from Ms. Moss, but this is basically an exterior change that's gonna be a huge improvement for the town.
Are you aware of what structure it is?
No.
Yes?
Which one is it?
It's the old Dalt House.
The one that's...
No, I got it.
The yellow one, that was her office.
This is gonna be a huge, this is gonna be a huge improvement, I'm so happy.
I know.
So since it's, well, the second to last resolution, now I thought I would take this for...
Hysterity.
Hysterity, so. Resolution 2024-42, September 8, 2024, site plan waiver. Whereas, application requesting a waiver of site plans have made to the town of Hyde Park planning board by Olivia Amabirdorf on September 17, 2024, properly located at 4407 Albany Post Road in the town of Hyde Park. And whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park planning board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permits received by the building department, August 12, 2024, and September 9, 2024, and regarding the specific requests as submitted to the planning board on September 17, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yay!
And I see that there's, I see someone must be introducing...
There's one last person.
Okay, before it's introduced, let me just say this. This is my last meeting. I'd like to thank Supervisor Pompie Delafield, Supervisor Tom Martino, Supervisor Aileen Rohr, and current Supervisor Altorgiani, and every town board they served on, including the ones who are here tonight, for entrusting me with what I thought was a really important job all these years. And I also want to thank our friends and consultants for making this amazing journey along the way. I learned a lot, truly I learned a lot, and if there's ever a point where they need another planning board alternate, I will be happy to serve, so I can come back on one at a time, but I can't keep up the pace anymore, sorry. So, but it's been a pleasure, all of you, thank you so much.
I know, I agree, I read it. Okay, good. This is Resolution Number 24-C, September 18, 2024. Resolution of appreciation for Chairman Michael F. Dupree. Whereas, Michael F. Dupree, having almost 20 years of service to the planning board of the town of Hyde Park, 18 of those years as chairman, and whereas during his tenure on the board, Mr. Dupree served with exceptional leadership and dedication to Hyde Park and its built environment, and is considered a most valued member of the planning board. And whereas, Mr. Dupree exhibited exemplary civic leadership in the review of applications before said board, and with the highest level of care given to both the applicants and the town, was always ready and able to find common ground on even the most difficult of projects, was a reliable source of knowledge on land use law, and consistently provided an environment for discourse and discussion to ensure well-informed decisions were made. And whereas, Mr. Dupree consistently made himself available to facilitate numerous non-core meetings with applicants to advance their applications, generously fielding questions from town residents regarding the planning board process, and tirelessly devoted himself to shepherding the town's growth. And whereas, the planning board of the town of Hyde Park wishes to express its appreciation to Mr. Dupree for his unwavering and devoted service to the residents, businesses, and property owners of Hyde Park, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby extends its appreciation to Michael F. Dupree for his distinguished service to the town and his devotion to the public good and commitment to improving the town of Hyde Park for all. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's the language that I wrote way back when for everybody else. My goodness, I'm so drippy. It got dripped up, but that's what it is, okay.
I was embellished.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much. Hey, Mark and Liz are kind of matchy tonight.
So, good evening, we're three of the town board members. Don is sick, and of course, the supervisor is out of town, but Michael, you've done an extraordinary job for the town of Hyde Park. We are very pleased with everything that you did. We hope you will be behind the scenes for us and help us out where we, where we need a little additional help. I know that Anne and the whole gang here, the rest of the board members will take the ball and run with it. Feel very confident that we have a good crew, and I think that everything is gonna go smooth, and you could take a little breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
The only problem is, none of the other board members answered my email. I emailed Dylan, and Rob, and John, and Christopher. I didn't email Anne. So this Saturday at 9:00, we have a rental truck, U-Haul, going over to Michael's house to pick up all the files. To drop them off at Anne's house, so that she can be brought up to speed, and between Anne and Chris, they can look at the files as they see fit, so that takes care of that.
I'll have to bring that back home.
It's several boxes, I can guarantee you that, but I really do clean up all of the files I have. As soon as, when we're through, or actually whenever I sign a site plan or subdivision, everything goes into recycling then for me, because we're done officially, and we have the files here. But everything that's open and ongoing is always there, and it was funny, when I was picking up these tonight, there's only like three other applications, and they're really old. Al's yard, Al's garage, that I'm not even sure are coming back, so. But this is a good time in which for me to depart, I promise, because the board, as you see, is skilled and knows what they're doing with Belafield. They'll get there, and the rest of the big projects are all gone, and that leaves just, yours is not a major project, but a bigger project, but yours is gonna be resolved now as well, because we've got DOT, so. Let's hope we have some more applications to keep these guys up here busy.
Most definitely.
They're always coming, don't you worry.
I'm sure.
But Liz's got a couple of words to say, and then Mark has a little something for you also.
It's actually bittersweet to sit before you tonight and say goodbye, your wealth of knowledge, to the town board, and we rely on you heavily for your unsurpassed knowledge that you bring to us, Michael. You have served Hyde Park for 18 years, shepherding the planning board with unsurpassed dedication, professionalism, and expertise. Your leadership on the planning board has helped to guide growth and development in our historic community. The countless hours that are required in preparation and review of major development projects, zoning code alterations, and comprehensive and future planning is mind-boggling. Chairman Dupree not only volunteers his time for his twice-monthly meeting, twice-monthly planning board meetings, but is also there for pre-submission meetings, workshops, and site visits, and all the other in meetings like he was talking about, he's going, that we are going into after these things tonight. Your commitment is always equally given whether the project is a complex development or a routine neighbor residential improvement. I don't know that you're, it doesn't seem, I don't know you that long, that you're old enough to even retire, but I guess we'll call it as we got your resignation.
I'm 67.
See, that's, well, people are retiring older and older now.
Pull your fucking mouth.
Call it your evolution. Your land use and planning knowledge are unmatched. You find the balance between the developer's requirements and upholding the zoning code, often offering solutions and guidance through the planning process. You freely, you, I'm sorry, you have given your knowledge freely in supporting and training those around you for the betterment of the town. Hyde Park has been honored by your service, and you will be greatly missed, but we do, I did learn tonight that Anne has been here the same amount of time as you have, so welcome, Anne, and we passed your resolution last night to take over for Michael at this point. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, thank you very much, Liz, very much.
Yes, real quick, real quick. I just want to say, you know, personal thank you to Michael. When I moved here, four years, five, five years ago now, Michael was one of the first people I met, like, within the town board, and I wouldn't be where I am today without Michael. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be as involved as I am.
I wouldn't goad you on to run for office, is what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, I appreciate that. No, but seriously, I, it was, it's been a pleasure to learn, I just like learning, and this is the, you were the wealth of knowledge that I needed to get involved, and that push to get involved, so personal thank you to you.
No, thank you for running in the first place and serving.
Yeah.
And for being the rec liaison, because you've got small kids.
Yeah, right in there. So I do want to present town of Hyde Park, you know, Michael Dupree, planning board chairman from 2007 to 2024, exemplary civic leader, devotion to the public good, and passionate dedication to our community and betterment.
Well, that's really cool, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Elected leaders for staying so late for the meeting to do this, I really do appreciate it, and I'm not going anywhere, I'm still gonna live here, obviously, and if you need anything that I can help with, the brain is still there. I mean, it's taking longer to pull things up these days, but it's still there and intact, so. Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
So I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, wait. Megan, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Well, so much for getting out at 7:30. But it's important that we discuss Delafield